Like to call us being in order, or to call her all?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Here.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Here.
Notori?
Here.
Robel?
Here.
Strumeloburg?
Yes.
Mayor Malin?
Yes.
At this point, unfortunately, we are going to go into executive session. We do have to clear the courtroom. No action will be taken at the executive. We'll be invited. Just call the meeting back to order. We're going to move forward with our combined conference regular meeting. First item up for discussion is we're going to receive Dr. Tomko, Superintendent of Belleville School, to discuss the pre-K program. So I'll just advise, I see a lot of new faces here today. This is actually a caucus portion of our meeting whereby the council discusses various initiatives, thoughts, ideas, concepts. Unfortunately, it's not open for public commenting, but you will have your portion of public commenting later on in the meeting. At this point, it's just a conversation amongst the council and any one of our invited guests. So you're basically just spectators listening to that. If you have comments that you want to make, you can still make them during this meeting, it's just going to be later on. So with further ado, Mr. Tomko?
Sure. Thank you, Your Honor. Where would you like me?
You can shut the gate and stand right --
Right at the gate?
There's going to be an echo.
It's going to sound weird. It's going to sound very weird, Seattle.
So we are, we have Dr. Tomko here. As most of the council knows, and most of the public knows, we've been exploring the concept of pre-K in Belleville. We've been speaking extensively with our state delegation, led by Senator Ruiz, who has some funding via a grant that can put 90 children into pre-K. This is not the first opportunity we've had this. We have only lost this opportunity previous year simply because of space. We truly do not have space. And the state will pay the grant, which will pay and cover all the costs, all the ongoing operating costs. So at this point, really what you're going to hear from Dr. Tomko, I've met with him, I know Councilman DePena has, and some other councilmen have talked to him at times, I know even our manager, Mr. Tucci, and we've been out touring places. So we've been touring various buildings, facilities throughout the township. The crux of it is this: we have funding for six 750-square-foot classrooms. That's state guidelines. So you're talking 4,500 square feet of classroom space with some additional space for faculty or staff or whatever. So we're looking for anywhere on the vicinity of 6,750 square feet. Again, the state pays for the program. We would have to retrofit whatever we find. So we're looking right now for a short-term solution, something that could be as quick as September or as late as January, and then maybe something more permanent. So without, that's just a summary for those of you who care to know the summary, and I'll just turn the floor over. Doc, I'm just going to ask you, Doc, speak loudly because we are videoing live.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor just indicated, we've been working on this, and many of the council members know for the past few years, and that we've been working on this for several years now. When the expansion grant first came out, unfortunately, we were not eligible for that for the first two cycles due to, the first question is, do you have space? We already run six preschool programs, integrated preschool programs, they're by lottery, meaning that we have, we service the special needs population of our students, four-year-olds and three- and four-year-olds. However, to integrate that, we have to have, for lack of a better term, regular ed students also in there. So we provide a lottery at a tuition, a nominal tuition base. Right now, so we do have preschool in district. However, this expansion grant put out a large sum of money to help districts expand their preschool programs with something called Pre-K Our Way, where you are to partner possibly with independent providers in town, which I believe we have almost 20 providers in town here. So we've been working on that for a few years. And one of our biggest concerns is the parameters that you just explained, Mayor. Space, bathrooms, each classroom's supposed to have a bathroom. So we've been working on this for several years now, trying to find space. And for all the, for lack of a better term, those properties that are available in Belleville, they're not really something that we can work with at this point. We are looking for a permanent fix. However, we've lost, my estimate would be close to a million dollars in funding a year for this program, which is a big amount of money. It would put more teachers in our classrooms, it would put more aides, leasing, things, any type of equipment, all those things are available at this grant money. Again, we're pretty close with temporary fixes now. I don't know if you want to discuss some of those or not. We look at some permanent things, too, to talk about, in consideration of the Walgreens property. Again, maybe not optimal, but can be renovated.
Let me just ask you a question. If we found a suitable place, 6,750 square -- Now, I'm asking this question because tomorrow I'm going to get a million emails from people that have property, have space.
I'm sure you are.
You alluded to the parameters before. Predominantly first floor, 750 square feet per classroom, bathroom in each classroom.
Correct.
They don't want anything above the second floor. That's no good. It can't be down at least four stairs or more.
Correct.
There are a lot of parameters.
Yes, ADA compliance issues. The bathroom, as long as the sewer lines or, you know, something that we can put a bathroom tap into is fine.
So if we find a suitable location, I mean, the township with your cooperation, you do have some money budgeted that you would be able to retrofit?
Correct. For -- Yes. There's money set aside for leasing, for whatever we can. I mean, they're, the idea, and again, I don't know how much we want to talk about tonight, but I guess you put me on the spot, so.
I'll make you the best.
Right. The idea is to partner with the town. This is, this has always been a township partnership with us in this, in the pre-K expansion. The whole idea is to partner with the town, to come up with some type of location. I think even the senator was taken aback that we couldn't find any place.
Right.
But we've all tried very hard, and some optimal spaces are on third floors, which is not congruent to preschool year.
Plus, for the benefit of everybody listening to the conversation, parameters. One of the most important ones is an outdoor playground.
Correct. Outdoor playground.
So not everybody can sit in outdoor playground on their property.
Right. Or the ability to have an outdoor playground.
Right.
So we're really trying hard to get this in. Again, we had some other ideas. I don't know if you want to approach those now.
Yeah, I'll just touch on them real quick. We do have a pretty good lead. We've toured a couple of times already. The manager's been with us, councilman's been with us. We've toured a couple of different locations. So we have a pretty good lead on something that Doc and I are going to go out and see probably toward the end of this week. 6,000 square feet, warehouse space, first floor, a lot of parking, space for an outdoor playground. And that, we're thinking, and it would be a decision that he would make obviously with the school, with the school board, school district, but we're thinking something temporary, maybe a year or two or three. And then, as the doc said, we would love to partner with the school district in some capacity. So with that being said, we've had conversations here, sometimes formally, sometimes just casually, that the high school complex, and again, it's very unique development, the stadium and the baseball field and the football field is actually a municipal complex, so it's really municipal land, and then you have the high school complex. There have been long plans, I have upstairs in my office, for some kind of a rec center at the high school, a standalone building. And we've been rushing off those plans. And if we can partner with the school district that has some money budgeted already, that may work. If we build a 100-by-100-square-foot building, which would give us 10,000 square feet, the thought is that the school district can utilize the first floor for pre-K, and as we mentioned, see about 4,500 square feet. The school district could probably also move their board offices there since it's right in the same complex, freeing up space in the high school. And now they've occupied the entire first floor, and we can then maybe utilize the second floor in two parts. Either a part multipurpose room that we desperately need here in Belleville, and what I like, the concept of bringing our recreation offices there at the municipal complex, since there are a plethora of problems with the current rec house, which is why we can't have our own daycare there or our own summer care there. There's, I don't want to get into them, but there's a lot of problems with that building. It's very dated, it's not compliant to a standard that needs to be. So that could potentially solve some problems, and it gets an asset for us of a rec center and a brand-new building whereby the school district can be our partner and fund, you know, equal parts of that. I think that would be sustainable for us. So it's, we're.
All right. I can speak to the board, I think, that we're not aware of that project.
No.
I'm not until you've mentioned it. So it's something we're very interested in. I've always said, this is my first day here, that we really need to work together to do the best for our students, citizens.
But there's a lot of space up in that municipal complex.
There is absolutely a lot of space. And I know, I know you and I have talked about the tennis courts, because we didn't know if those are ours or yours, or the green acres, and they're apparently ours and have to be repaired, so I'm going to have to look through them.
How about?
Not that we're looking for any money here, is that right?
How about?
That would also be a good part, time to do them in and allow more park.
I was explaining to Doc today that we used to have another set of tennis courts in right field there. And if we, actually, I said to councilman, I said that exact thing, if they get moved inside the municipal complex, that would free up parking, that would service a new building that would be there. And left field, the center field out.
And I think, again, with all due respect, it sounds like a, I would love to see that plan come to fruition, and I'm sure it will. I just think that's several years still out.
Sure. At least two years out.
So this is, this is a program with the board, with the pre-K expansion, something the board really wants to get into. And right now, we are, I'm running out of time.
Sure. Short-term goals are, we need something of, for a year, two, or three, and we're going out this week to look for something for that.
Right.
And again, really, at that short-term, that short-term, it has nothing to do with us.
Right.
That would be a decision that the doc makes with the board.
Absolutely. It's just, we're just.
And we're on board, though.
Yes. Right. No, the second part is definitely a plan that I think the board, the board's committees and your committees or whomever, how that would work, we'd definitely love to have a joint meeting and talk about that. Obviously, it's your property, your specs and whatnot, we'd love to talk about that further and how we could expand that into our own, you know, somehow be partner with you on that. Again, I think, you know, this council's more, again, with all due respect to any former councilor, mayor, or whoever it is, this council's more responsive to pre-K expansion, just because I think that in the past, it wasn't as heightened on alert, that we've missed two rounds now. No one in Essex County got it last year at all.
Not worked again?
None, none who hasn't had it yet.
Oh, okay.
So that's a, that's a concern for, I'm sorry.
And what we're talking about is 90 students?
Possibly, could be up to 90 students. I don't, I don't want to.
Well, if we get the amount.
Right. And I'm looking at multiple, multiple spaces. I mean, there's, it could be three different spaces, you know, I mean, we're just, I just want to open up. I'd love to have one complex, make it easier, you know, food service, nurse, there's a whole other gamut of things that have to go into the planning for this. We can't do any of that without a location.
How would they be selected?
It'd still be through lottery.
Lottery?
So we actually --
Would it be income, based on income?
Uh, no, this would not be based on income. This would just be lottery. Okay. So whatever the parameters are, I shouldn't, I shouldn't speak out of turn, and I don't involve them, but I'm pretty sure this would have to be lottery.
Lottery.
Not necessarily.
Why not?
Yeah.
So given the time, if we were to come up with something, shovels can be in the ground and doing what we, doing what needs to be done in preparation of September?
I'm, I'm ready to go as soon as I find a spot.
Yeah.
I mean, we're on high alert, we have money budgeted for this. We were, I was under the impression that some sites would be ready by September, but it looks like there are some issues with ADA compliance. Yep. So those are on the back row right now, so we're looking for any space available now. And again, with all the, everybody talking about all the space here, it's not shovel room ready, we're not.
I need to write it.
I'm very optimistic it will work this week, so.
I hope so.
Any other council question?
We're good. We're on board here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Doc. Thoughts, comments? No?
Great. It's great.
I don't see, I don't have a copy of it, but the second item, I was recently at the mayor's conference, and I was with, I believe it was consultants from Mazer.
And Interpol.
Yes. Are you, can you talk to this, Tom, at all, or no?
I, I read the ordinance, you want this basically?
Yeah, just come right here, let me just tell everybody what we're doing. So I was recently at a mayor's conference, and I was speaking with Mazer, people from Mazer, and I was still not happy at the fact that when we walked on Belmore, it was a brand-new street that was beautifully paved, and all of a sudden, I saw not one, not two, but three different dig-ups that were just horribly dug, gravelled, not, not patched back incorrectly. It was horrendous. It really was horrendous. And I was discussing that, and I know for a fact, Councilman Cosarelli's been mentioning, I think it was Carney.
Yeah, we've been working on it. We've been piecing together other towns to see the best of all.
So Mazer has an ordinance from Mont Bel that would force utilities, if they dig up the street, after we give them notice of what streets we're going to be paving, if they come in a month later and dig it up, they got to pave the whole street.
Curb-to-curb, that's cool, yeah.
The whole block.
Yeah, curb-to-curb.
Curb-to-curb, the whole block. So, Tom, if you just --
That was basically, I think there was a five-year moratorium on, yeah, it's a five-year moratorium, if they, depending on how much they tear up, they pave curb-to-curb. If it's just a small hole, then you have to go 50 feet either side of it, curb-to-curb, if I remember correctly.
Right.
There were three parameters in that ordinance.
So is this just for utilities?
Anyone who digs up the streets, it's ordinance.
It's ordinance, three feet.
Settlers.
Four by four, three by four.
It says three feet.
Okay. Do you have a copy?
Yeah, yeah, I have.
Okay.
More than three feet.
Well, it'd be good to do, because at this time.
You can kill.
You can kill.
What, in your opinion, does it work? I mean, do they actually come in and?
Yeah, but you have to force them to road opening permits.
Right.
The utility companies come in and they have an opening, an open, like, almost like an open road opening permit, so.
Right.
You have to make them do each one for each dig, so you keep track of it.
Who does that? A code in this township?
Building code?
No, the engineering.
Engineering? What about two? Like, when they come in, they're supposed to be using our protection, our police force? And I've seen as of late, state police and other things, so is there a way to include that anywhere to make sure we use our people? That'll kind of force them to enforce.
Don't know.
Actually, right, anything, it's an ordinance, yeah.
Yeah. But how does that handle with our DPW, and our word guys that go out and dig it up? I mean, it's nothing to do with that.
It's nothing to do with outside utilities.
It's only outside utilities. So this would be cable, fiber, VSG type.
Somebody other than us want.
Yeah. Right.
What is our, what do we do? Like, we, I'm going back to Belmore for a second. We hand that contract, we knew we were going to do that street, we bid it out, we received bids, we awarded the contract. What internally in this town, what do we then do? Do we send our word report out there to test hydrants, to test the boxes, or?
Something we had to start initiating, make sure everything's good and that.
Right, there's no point.
We'd TV the sewers before.
One of those dig-ups was, was a fire hydrant, and.
Yes, it was the valve.
There was, was a valve, so, I mean, is there, I guess my question is, is there a way to check for that?
Yeah, you have to make them exercise all the valves, make sure the hydrants are working, and.
So we can do that?
Have the water on and off.
Don't you send a list to public services?
Yeah. They have a website called, I forget what it's called, but before you, every year, I just sent word for this year. Is that all right?
I'm not worried about them, what's the worry about us? Because we seem to be going and digging up.
Maybe they did, but document and process has to be put in place to encompass every --
Like a checklist.
Yeah, checklist, just to go ahead and after, before, during and after.
Yeah, but, I mean, the township's been there 100 years.
We can't, we can't.
We haven't done that yet.
Right, and we can, if it's not there, we go back, can't go back and check yesterday. Implement.
Move it forward.
Well, I'll put something together for them, to always check the streets that we know we're doing. A lot, you know, a lot of emergencies, if still can avoid.
Right, but you can still follow a process.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I could, maybe rework some of that ordinance, put out the police.
Yeah, if you can just, get that, rework that for Belleville's purposes, and give that to the clerk, we'll, we'll definitely get it on.
I'll do it, I'll give it to Steve to review before we give it to the clerk to do it.
But then it's, you know, I hate to say it, but then it comes down like everything else, it's enforced on our side.
Exactly.
We have to police it. There's no point in doing it, so we don't necessarily police it, so we would, we'd get a process.
Please, please communicate, like you said, some sort of process.
So can you do that, Doc, there?
Okay.
Thank you. So that was number two, ordinance repaving roads, your road number permit. The next item is, we, this is probably now the fourth work session we've discussed this. I've spent a lot of time just talking to our senior clubs Tuesday and Friday. They constantly complain that they don't know what's going on in the township. And I get that, and I understand that. They're not necessarily on the internet, so they don't see our website, and if they're not on the internet, they don't have social media, so they don't see that. They used to rely heavily on the local newspapers, the weeklys, we don't really have them anymore. The closest thing that probably comes is probably the Observer, that covers eight, nine different towns. And, and it's funny, because when I talk to them, and they ask me about something, I say to them all the time, "How did you hear about this?" "Somebody at the club told me." So we have to do a better job of trying to communicate to them. And the first item that I thought about would be something that was almost cost-neutral, I thought, is we're all used to this recycling calendar here. And this, so we have a budget for this, and we print it up every year, and it's got a 12-month calendar in it. And I think the last two or three years, we missed, we got it out in like August when it started, July, so I know we get a lot of complaints that we don't get it out on time. And if you ask me, it's grossly underutilized. We have, it's a 32-page document that the majority of it covers really 12 months, and I think it can be redesigned. This is something that I've had some experience with. It can be redesigned and repurposed into a community newsletter. So instead of mailing that once a year, we can do it twice a year, and it could have positive articles about some of the initiatives and programs or services that we've been doing, as well as have just a six-month calendar, because when we do this in July, or when we mail it out, we have to know all our events through next July, or June 31st. So if we do it every six months, the calendar can be a lot more timely. And when I talk about wasted space, if you ever flip through this, most people I get it only use it for the calendar. But if you flip through this, I mean, this looks like a circular that you would get from ShopRite or something like that. I mean, it's, I don't know how useful it is. And I would argue that the content in it is literally just copied and pasted every single year. It hasn't changed in years. So as I read this, this is our clerk's page, so, as I read this, I don't know if our council is, is aware of the fact that when you request a block party, the mayor and organizations have to address the municipal council. I found that to be odd, I didn't know that. And then if you go on to read about tag days, which by the way, we don't really even sanction tag days anymore, that's the revenue part of that. Again, the mayor and the organization has to address the council. So this stuff hasn't been looked at in a long time, it's been copied and pasted, I think we can just do a better job. And it's, it does cost, I think we're a couple thousand dollars or more to have an outside company do it twice a year than we are just doing this, hitting the print button every year, so.
Would that be still done through the same grant?
This is no question.
This is?
We pay for it.
No, oh, we pay for that. It would still be, okay.
This is already budgeted, I think this, I have it down here.
Three communities, what do you got?
Yeah. It is, yeah.
Recyclable, recyclable.
Which is, that's why.
Okay. We have here 18, I think 25, we would get it twice a year, so it's a $7,000 increase, and we get positive news stories. I think they even mentioned column for award or something like that. But anyway, that's, you could potentially get advertising for offset. Not being on advertisements. It's going to be cheaper to do it. Anyway, that's probably the fourth time that we've discussed it. That's the recycling calendar. Senior newsletters, again, I'm still open to discuss this, whether we, something monthly or bi-monthly, not as elaborate as this, not as full color. We've already saw that there's 4,500 senior households. Even if we just did a tri-fold that had some news on it, that we sent out to our 4,500 senior households every month, every month, that would be something that I think they would enjoy. Just a thought, that one, we're not really moving on yet, but that's just a thought. My last item is social media archiving. I didn't realize this was on there, so.
Well, actually, I'm glad that it's on there, Mayor, because it should have been an agreement that should have been included, so this agenda, I just need to go check why it was not been relapsed in the other days.
Yeah, there was, two weeks ago, not in New Jersey, but there was another municipality that was hacked and for ransomware, which is a little different topic than this. This is, since the township does do social media now, official channels of Facebook and Twitter, we are obligated to archive and back that up. As so much so, the clerk herself, or this self, whatever town you're in, is responsible. So if a resident actually, and this is where most of you don't realize it, we have social media accounts, Facebook and Twitter, township one. If we post something out there, and a resident comments, and then somebody else comments and they need that, and then one of them deletes their comment, the clerk's still responsible for that record. It's a public record. So without the help of a third-party company, you can't archive that. It's, it's, I think it's $100 a month or something like that, and a third-party company does just that. I think we're billing it out through SHI, though, because they have our state contract. It's a national company, it's a big company, it's something like that. All right, so we, tomorrow, are we going to get that off in the next?
Yes, it'll be on the next meeting.
Okay. I'm done, actually. B, which is Councilman Graziano, was in error. We are going to put that on for the next work session, which is the first meeting in June, which is going to be June 11th. So on June 11th will be, that'll be the first item out on the caucus portion of the meeting.
Yes.
And our township attorney has popped on for our.
Yes. This was on communications, but it's something that I would have to draw. There's a very small piece of property behind 8166 Avenue that is landlocked. For some reason, the township owns it.
We own a lot of property.
It's not even, it's about 15 by 15, it's a very, very small piece of property. But.
Appraisal's going to cost more than that.
Well, the appraisal, yeah, the appraisal may cost more than the, now, I think it'll be valuable a little bit more than that, because there's other property owners that
It's a national company, it's a big company, it's something like that. All right, so we, tomorrow, are we gonna get that off in the next?
Yes, it'll be on the next meeting.
Okay. I am done, actually. B, which is Councilman Graziano, was in error. We are gonna put that on for the next work session, which is the first meeting in June, which is gonna be June 11th. So on June 11th will be, that'll be the first item, hell, on the caucus portion of the meeting.
Yes.
And our township attorney has popped on for our.
Yes. This was on communications, but it's something that I would have to draw. There's a very small piece of property behind 816 Avenue that is landlocked. For some reason, the township owns it.
We own a lot of property.
It's not even, it's about 15 by 15, it's a very, very small piece of property. But.
Appraisal's gonna cost more than that.
Well, the appraisal, yeah, the appraisal may cost more than the, now, I think it'll be valued a little bit more than that, because there's other property owners that surround, there's four or five, believe it or not, there's four or five property owners that surround it. So I just wanted your okay, so I can explore getting an appraisal and sell it to, one property owner wrote to the township, but requesting it, but it, since it is, since it is an undersized lot, it just has to be offered to all your buddy properties. So I'll get an, I'll have an appraisal done with our appraisal company, and then we'll do a resolution to list it once we have the appraisal.
I've been emailed by several property owners that have, we have probably over 100 properties. We're in the process of databasing them now, applying them to a map, so we can see what the township actually owns visually. But we have people that are interested in buying adjacent property, so what, they would just, they write a letter to the township?
Or the township can offer it on its own, so the township will, now, this property, I don't even know how it worked out that it, the township owns it. It's in the backyards of three or four different properties. So the township can sell any property that doesn't have use for it, depending on whether it's a buildable lot or it's not a buildable lot.
So just to, just for the benefit of those, if it's a buildable lot, we have to just hold it auction, and the highest price gets?
A buildable lot, a buildable lot, it has to be auctioned off. A lot that's undersized and is not buildable has to be offered to the adjacent property owners, and then if the adjacent property owners don't want to buy it, it can be auctioned off, but it's not likely that anyone would buy an undersized lot, that the adjacent property owners don't even want.
By assumption, if there was more than one person that wanted it, it would be a build-up?
It would be, yeah, right, exactly. There's a minimum, we do the appraisal because we don't know what it's worth, so the appraisal fixes an amount, and the minimum bid is always that amount. We have an obligation to the residents that we get full value for the property, that's why we get the appraisal. And just so the public knows, the property owner who buys it actually ends up reimbursing the township's court costs for that appraisal. So it doesn't cost the township anything ultimately if it signs.
Cool. Okay, like that. Next up, we have a couple minutes.
The bond conference and regular meeting April 9.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, clerk Colorado.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
For the manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Brief report this evening. On the agenda, you will see four salary ordinances. The first two are basically housekeeping, completing some positions from one barney to another, and maybe some modifications by the two titles. The next two concerns PBA, and the FMBA, and the salary order, the recent improvement of contracts and memorandum of understanding. And I believe the PBA contract is completed. Wait until I finish my review, and then I'll send it up to you for your signature. And the FMBA will be here very shortly. Concerning DTW, we trimmed trees on four streets, removed the trees that were diseased or end or dead on 10th Street, we packed 24 Streets, we cleaned various township's properties, we've been maintaining our recently improved varsity baseball field, and we served six water range for indoor services. That's all I have.
Questions?
Yes.
Just, just to be, I didn't want to raise a big complaint.
Mr. Toots.
Yes, sir.
Question, why are we moving from, the two first ordinances, why are we deleting from a BMEA employee and moving to a supervisor's unit?
Because prior to me getting here in January of 2016, there was one title where a few of the folks in that title were moved to the LIU barbeary, and this is the housekeeping part. All this does is move the remaining two, I believe, into that same barbeary.
So it's just a move of a title, that's it, no?
Exactly, yes.
Anybody else? Anything regarding, reported manager? No? Reported mayor? Just want to start with a few follow-ups. As you heard, the manager speak before, the PBA contract is ready, as soon as I get it, it'll be signed. I just signed tonight, the FMBA, that was, I guess, the memorandum of understanding.
Right.
Okay, so I just signed that contract tonight. Last week, we had our police unit tour send-off, I was on-site for that in the Hanover. Our guys pedaled all the way down from New Jersey to Washington in honor of some of our fallen police officers. They observed, they came late vigil, and basically headed back. Yeah, they pedaled all the way in the rain. It wasn't fun, I'm sure, I've seen some of the videos. The library had a good Cinco de Mayo event, we had a great community cleanup day, we had a bunch of people out, we spread out throughout the township, various different locations, cleaning up. At that same day, we dropped off about 10 different or 15 different planter boxes. You've seen the planter boxes with the flowers throughout the township, there's, I believe, 15 or 20 more, 20 more coming. That came at the help of not only our Boy Scouts in the original one, but our high school too. So there's 20 more coming. If you have locations, or you want one, or your business that wants something outside, feel free to contact us. We've already discussed the condition of Belvoir Ave, today we've mentioned the ordinance. So current stuff, we have, you heard already, free pre-K, we're still going down that road, is something that we definitely want to deliver and work closely with the Board of Education with. We are gonna be continuing the conversations internally here with regard to the Great Lawn. So I've been sending some emails about this to our Bagger's professionals, and what sparked this new interest the last couple days is, twice in the past four days, I saw people walking in Franklin Avenue, because the trees are so overgrown, that they don't feel comfortable walking on the sidewalk. I saw somebody running, wasn't quite sure if they were just running in the street or foot on the sidewalk. But I did see something on Sunday that was potentially very dangerous and scary, a woman walking a dog, the dog was nearly hit, she had to yank the dog by the leash to get him out of, why she was walking her dog in the middle of, in the lane of the street, I don't know, I think they could have probably fit on the sidewalk, but just not comfortable there, it's a public safety issue at this point. We are exploring some legal options there, I think it's already on the work session for the June meeting, to give some direction to our professionals on how we can move forward on potentially acquiring that land. It is deemed restricted to open space, we obviously want to always keep it deemed restricted to open space, but it's just currently not being maintained. And if we can acquire it and maintain it, I think it would be a good asset for Belvoir, you know, for open space, clearly. Moving forward, next Monday, May 20th, at 10:30 in the morning, we will have our United States Senators here, potentially our Congressperson in Belvoir on Washington Avenue for the post office renaming, to, or naming it on Mr. Savella. And that's gonna be at 10:30, I don't have a flyer, I haven't received anything yet, but it is next Monday at 10:30 in the morning. I was recently interviewed by Comcast Newsmakers, that interview is now starting to air. In that interview, you will hear that Belvoir now has an app, the app is part of the website, so you can go to the Apple Store right now, type in "Belvoir NJ" into beta mode. So if you go to your Apple Store with your phone, type "Belvoir NJ," you'll see the app, you can download it, you can report bugs. It's basically a mobile, an app version of the website. There is some different features in there that you might like, just want to mention that. We have a DOT public hearing on May 23rd, so that's coming up, May 23rd, 6 o'clock, right here in this room. DOT is committing to a 10 to 12 million dollar upgrade to Washington Avenue. I will say this, as I say it every time, this is their road, this is their highway, this is their plan. They're merely coming here to present their plan to us. We've had some meetings with them, and we've asked them for some consideration, and they've listened to, we believe, some of our recommendations. But at the end of the day, we need to be there at that meeting on May 23rd to let them hear us. And we're not the people that you need to field your complaints to, you need to be here on the 23rd, so the state hears your issues, your concerns, your complaints. I will tell you, they are exploring what's called road dieting, so right now, we have a four-lane highway outside, and they are exploring going down to three travel lanes with a shared lane. So it would be a turning lane in the center, kind of like what you see in Florida, where it's a shared turning lane in the center. Believe it or not, they say, and I've seen some reports, I've even seen a study from a police chief who was first against it, and now he's the biggest advocate of it, because when you're driving down the street, if you're in the center lane, and somebody's making a left in front of you, you tend to jet over to the next lane, and that's where the accidents happen. So now there's a dedicated turn lane, and the traffic flows much easily, much more easily. Can't say I'm in favor of it, I'm just gonna say that you need to be there on, on May 23rd at 6 o'clock, right here, to hear that. Lastly, our next meeting, our next council meeting is in two weeks from today, it's May 28th, 6 o'clock right here, that's our budget introduction meeting, you'll hear about the budget at that meeting. And lastly, we are gonna be hearing some stuff in the next couple days, by the end of the week, about Homeworld Day, seven more that we always do. That's it for really my mayor's report. Next up, first meeting in a month, which is this caucus meeting, do you have any committee reports? Any councilperson that sits on an ad hoc committee that has anything to say? Speak to our favor, hold your peace.
I know, we had the second IT meeting, we're just waiting for some budget information.
Yeah, we're waiting for some budget information, and some, Mr. Toots, some information back from the internet circuits and stuff, can we get a chance? Yeah, so we can now come back together and put together a final presentation of the course.
So, that's IT. Anybody else? You were, I know that we did the, we're doing the salary order, but on that introduction today, next meeting, which, next work session, which is the first meeting in June, we're gonna have a discussion on that, but we were gonna do some surveys, if you remember, of various, I don't want to say the title, but you remember.
Yes, the different titles that were surveyed, they will be ready for the next meeting.
Okay. So we get them to you. And then just a follow-up from the last mayor's report, only pertains to the salary order tomorrow. We, I saw on the salary orders, it still has the secretaries being paid per meeting, which is totally fine, but we were gonna, I think, formalize the policy on that. That's it, just want to force you around. Next up, everybody good up here? Next up, communications?
A letter received, the Deputy State Historic Preservation Officer of the New Jersey Historic Preservation Office, the comment received to the following locations, roadway resurfacing of Rucker Street from Washington Avenue to Main Street, roadway resurfacing of Union Avenue from Belvoir Avenue to Mill Street, roadway resurfacing of Mill Street from Washington Avenue, Washington Avenue east to Main Street, and roadway resurfacing of Mill Street from Union Avenue between the Bridge Street. The letter received from Charles Nelson, Senior Director of Government and Regulatory Affairs of Comcast, stating, Camille Canty of Belvoir has received a $2,500 scholarship from Comcast for the Leaders Achievers Program. And C, letter received from Grace Baptist Church for permission to conduct their annual block party on Saturday, August 24th, on Remont Street between Little and Oakbrook Avenue, excuse me, from 1 to 5 p.m.
Do we make a motion?
Make a motion.
All right, any motion, accept that?
Make a motion.
Motion made in second, clerk Colorado.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes, just real quick, in that communication, A, I know you read the streets off, Rucker Street. I've been getting a ton of complaints about Rucker Street as it relates to the intersection by Main Street, and so just so we all know up here, they're doing Rucker Street from Washington Avenue to Main Street, it does not include that intersection. The state maintains that, it's the county responsibility, the county maintains the state responsibility. I've talked to both, they both said that we, the township, need to sue both of them to get some of that.
Great.
So in the meantime, as the room becomes a public safety hazard, I sent, and the manager saw this, I sent some nasty emails last week, and actually, the state did come out and patch it, but we all know that patch only lasts weeks if it does. So we still have some work to do to get that portion done, but we're trying, and they both are trying their hand down the road. But this, don't be mistaken, this does not include that intersection.
Next up, ordinances?
Ordinance number one for introduction, ordinance to amend and ordinance creating from positions and adopting reclassification compensation plans.
Motion introduce?
Motion made in second, clerk Colorado.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes. Ordinance number three for introduction and ordinance creating personnel positions and adopting classification plans.
Make a motion introduce?
Second.
Motion made in second, clerk Colorado.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
Ordinance number four for introduction and ordinance creating personnel positions and adopting classification and compensation plans.
Make a motion introduce?
Second.
Motion made in second, clerk Colorado.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
Ordinance number six for introduction and ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances in the township of Belvoir, Chapter 8-16, the handicap parking spaces.
Make a motion introduce?
Second.
Motion made in second, clerk Colorado.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
So we're gonna move on to now to B, just for the benefit of getting a lot of strange looks from people, so I see a lot of first timers here, these ordinances for introduction are just that, they're just being introduced, they're not all yet, they're not final, there'll be a second reading in about two meetings from now, where the public will be able to speak on them. You see a lot of salary changes there for a lot of our different unions, those are really because of our contract negotiations are final, and we're signing the contracts, and now we have to update the salary ordinances to reflect that 2% or whatever that increase was. That's why you're seeing all these salaries change. Next up, we have B, ordinances for public hearings, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing, the ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation to establish a cap statute.
Motion open for public?
Second.
Motion made in second, clerk Colorado.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
Mr. Frantantone?
As a senior councillor, I oppose this every year, because, very low history, this is a scam being perpetrated on the public by our Daniel 120 and 20 New Jersey Legislature. In 1976, there was severe opposition to imposing an income tax. So to make it a little more powerful, the legislature at that time, okay, we're going to put property tax caps on local municipalities, and back then, there were 5%, 5% and 1/2%. That lasted about a year. Then all the special interests are going to the legislature, and this is out of caps, this is uncovered by the caps, this is, and as you all know, your municipal budget, we just introduced recently, more than half of it is uncovered by the caps. This is gas. Then they went a step further, at some point down the road, a dozen or more years ago, they allowed municipalities to exceed the cap by up to 3 and 1/2%. And guess for what reason? For no reason. For no reason at all, municipalities can just vote like tonight, you're gonna vote to exceed the cap that the government imposes, but it's meaningless. With more than half your budget out of caps, then you can increase it by 3 and 1/2 without giving any single reason at all, and, and the public isn't aware of the scam that's been put on the public. So every year, I ask you not stay within your budget like we do, we all have strict salaries that we work with and all, we have to live within that parameter. So when you increase it by this much, I oppose it every year, and hopefully, some of you'll listen and not vote this year. And just, I always look a little praise, I just want to thank you, Mayor Melon, for using the mic. Perhaps you can teach your other members. And Mr. Graziano, the last, the planning board, member to consultant, you grabbed the mic, the mic worked fine, she spoke loud and clear, but then she turned ahead and didn't speak into the mic. So we're trying to hear, but we can't, but thank you for using the mic properly, tongue's gotta be two inches away from your mouth, please.
We don't have enough mic to everybody. We're working through that.
They're over there, I don't know what happened, and when, they said they weren't working.
Councilman Graziano has no microphone.
Councilman Graziano picked it up, looked at it, and it worked fine.
Mr. Toots, Mr. Toots has no microphone. These microphones you see here don't project, they only record.
Vote no.
Motion closed, public, the move for final adoption?
Motion made in second, clerk Colorado.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumelberg.
No.
We're all voting closed, Colorado.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
Order is approved. Ordinance number two for public hearing, ordinance of the mayor and council, township of Belvoir, County of Essex, New Jersey, adopting the 74-102 Washington Avenue Development Plan.
Make a motion open to public?
Those are really because of our contract negotiations are final and we're signing the contracts. Now we have to update the salary ordinances to reflect that two percent or whatever that increase was. That's why you're seeing all these salaries change. Next up, we have B, ordinances for public hearings, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing, an ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation to establish a cap statute.
Motion open for public.
Motion made in second, clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli, DePena, Graziano, Natori, Robel, Strumelobert, Mayor Mellon.
Yes. Mr. Frank Tantone.
As a senior mayor and councilman, I oppose this every year because, very low history, this is a scam being perpetrated on the public by our Daniel 120 and crackling the new judge legislature. In 1976, there was severe opposition to imposing an income tax. So to make it a little more powerful, the legislature at that time, okay, we're going to put property tax caps on local municipalities, and back then there were five, five and a half percent. That lasted about a year, then all the special interests are going to the legislature and this is out of caps. This is uncovered by the caps, this is, and as you all know, your municipal budget, we just introduced recently, more than half of it is uncovered by the caps. This is gas. Then they went a step further at some point down the road, dozen or more years ago. They allowed municipalities to exceed the cap by up to three and a half percent. And guess for what reason? For no reason. For no reason at all, municipalities can just vote like tonight, you're gonna vote to exceed the cap that the government imposes, but it's meaningless, cause more than half your budget's out of caps, then you can increase it by three and a half without giving any single reason at all. And the public isn't aware of this scam that's been put on the public. So every year I ask you not stay within your budget like we do, we all have strict salaries that we work with and all. We have to live within that parameter. So when you increase it by this much, I oppose it every year and hopefully some of you'll listen and not vote this year. And just, I always look a little praise, I just wanna thank you, Mayor Mellon, for using the mic. Perhaps you can teach your other members. And Mr. Graziano, the planning board member, the consultant, you grabbed the mic, the mic worked fine, she spoke loud and clear, but then she turned her head and didn't speak into the mic. So we're trying to hear, but we can't, but thank you for using the mic properly, tongue's gotta be two inches away from your mouth, please.
We don't have enough mic to everybody. We're working through that.
They're over there, I don't know what happened, they said they weren't working.
Councilman Graziano has no microphone.
Councilman Graziano picked it up, looked at it, gave it to him, and it worked fine.
These microphones you see here don't project, they only record.
Vote no.
Motion to close public, move for final adoption.
Motion made in second, clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli, DePena, Graziano, Natori, Robel, Strumelobert. Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Ordinance approved. Ordinance number two for public hearing, ordinance of the mayor and council of the township of Delval, County of Essex, New Jersey, adopting the seventy-four dash one oh two Washington Avenue redevelopment plan.
Make a motion open for public.
Motion made in second, clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli, DePena, Graziano, Natori, Robel, Strumelobert, Mayor Mellon.
Yes. Mayor, just a, not yet. Mr. Frank Tantone.
Well, they're gonna make a presentation, I think the public hearing should be after, we should make comments after we hear what they have to say about it.
He's making no presentation, this has been before the planning board twice and there were public hearings there with all the professionals there, with all the drawings, with all the renderings, with all the experts. This was before the planning board already and voted on by the planning board, it's coming to us for final adoption.
Well, they rose and they got plans there to speak, so if you're gonna go speak, you're not gonna let them.
If you have any questions that I can't answer and I need to use our professionals to answer, they'll answer.
Well, the proper way is the public speaks after a presentation.
No presentation on the agenda.
Okay, I gotta see if they present something. First of all, this is not an area needed redevelopment. This is another scam, this is empty property and the reason it's empty is because the owner threw the tenant out. The owner evicted the property. It's a vacant lot that was approved over a dozen years ago for eight units on that property. This is another scam and the public got enough, this is just to give them a pot, a tax abatement that we, the taxpayers, have to subsidize for their making millions of profits on that thing. And we're tired of it. And you always cite, Mr. Mayor, Jersey City, all the tax abavements. Mayor followed, just did you another new letter, I read you the last one, and I'll just read you one sentence. The city has stopped the historical practice of long-term tax abavements for market rate housing. This was a Jersey City practice for decades that we committed to phase out in a responsive way and we have done that. At this point, the city hasn't granted any tax abavements for years, thank you Jersey City. So stop making, we, the taxpayers, subsidize these wealthy investors.
Thank you. Michael, so just one quick question, the address listed here says seventy-four one oh two, is it seventy-eight one oh two or is this including the adjoining property that was going to be kind of a reverse subdivision for the site? Cause the original address was seventy-eight one oh two, but it's listed here as seventy-four one oh two. Is that an error, is that a typo?
I don't know if it's an error, I do know that they have acquired the property next door.
Cause there was also, if I remember correctly, the planning board hearing for this, they were also going to acquire property on Williams Street. So, but that's not, that's not listed here, so I'm just confused about the address being listed here. It doesn't include Williams, but Williams Street wasn't part of, was part of the planning board hearing. And then I guess this is including that adjoining property to the south of seventy-eight one oh two. Is there any clarification on the address?
I don't have clarification on the address, no.
Does anybody here know what the reservation includes? Is it just the principal property or is it the two or three?
That our professional here to give. It includes Lot 11, which is also a Williams Street address. It's on the boundary map that's available with the plan. And I'll leave that.
We have the boundaries. Thank you.
Make a motion to close public and move for final adoption.
Motion made in second, clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli, DePena, Graziano, Natori, Robel, Strumelobert, Mayor Mellon.
Yes, just real quick, I know that's now been closed, so our professionals, there was a statement made that that is not the redevelopment area, is that a true statement? Is that, is that property in the redevelopment area?
The property along, for the record, my name is Dean Donatelli, I'm special redevelopment council for the township. The property that was mentioned on Washington, on Williams Street is included.
The entire property is, area needs redevelopment.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ordinance number three for public hearing and ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances of the township of Delval, chapter eight dash two point seven, stopping or standing prohibited during certain hours on certain streets for the purpose of street cleaning.
Motion open for public.
Motion made in second, clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli, DePena, Graziano, Natori, Robel, Strumelobert, Mayor Mellon.
Motion, motion to close public, move for final adoption.
Motion made in second, clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli, DePena, Graziano, Natori, Robel, Strumelobert, Mayor Mellon.
Yes. Okay, next up, we have public comments, do you get a motion?
Motion open for public comments.
Motion made in second, to over for public comments, clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cosarelli, DePena, Graziano, Natori, Robel, Strumelobert, Mayor Mellon.
Yes. Just before we start, a lot of new faces here, again, public commenting is just that, it's your opportunity to speak on anything you want, including anything you heard here today, residents are limited to a public comment experience of about five minutes.
Mayor and councilman, how are you?
Hey, dude.
I don't envy you anymore.
Oh, good dear.
And I'd like to bring everybody's attention to the Department of Public Works. I know I spoke to Michael about it a while ago and it's actually a disgrace. Has anybody been down there, Steve?
You're talking about the physical.
The physical plant, the yard, the equipment, the spirit decor of the men that worked there, the unhealthy conditions that we're dealing with, it's a disgrace. Now, I pulled DEP, I didn't want to, but I got to a point where I had no alternative to do it. It's not a healthy environment for people to work there. And I do have photographs, sir, if anyone wishes to see.
Just that Jim, I know you mentioned that you had no alternatives, you couldn't come here first, but.
I waited, you know what? Mr. Mayor, I waited maybe three years before I got to a point where I just got fed up. I mean, I live in the town and I know Mr. Ducci said the guys were out cleaning up and doing it. What about your own house? Wouldn't you clean your own house before you go out? Now, I think you were the person to mention, it would cost maybe $200,000 to clean up this touch contaminated film. It's gonna cost more than that. And I don't know how many yards of fill are there, but it looks like more than $200,000 worth of damages are. Not including the leaf mats that are piled up, if you look at that, you could keep those pictures, by the way. And I have three questions on the record, I guess, Kelly. Three questions I'd like to ask, I'd like an estimate of the amount of fill that will have to be removed from that area. I like an estimate of how much it's gonna cost the township to remove that debris. And I would like an estimate, an estimated time of when they will commence doing that. I mean, Steve, it's good to see you, I haven't seen you in a while. I think it's really a disgrace, it really is. And our, I mean, I know Mr. Ducci was here back when I was the head of PPW and we paved the yard. You didn't want, you were reluctant to do it, but I convinced you to do it. Now.
I don't recall it going that way, but.
No, it was, it was not a recycling. I remember it quite well, but it's a hell hazard, Mr. Mayor and council. It really is. And Tom, congratulations, congratulations to you too. That's all I have to say, but those three questions, I'll try to be here on the 28th and get some, well, we have the engineer here. He can help you out.
So I, you know me, I was given straight and I'm equally as a fault at that and I have been since day one.
I know, I spoke with you at the Chandler.
I've had many conversations, we've been here, we've been here 10 months and all three of those questions that you asked, I believe can be answered because we're ready to, we're ready to make an actual plan to do that down there. So I believe we do have those three answers because I've been pounding it.
Are we gonna, are we gonna bond this?
It's already, I don't know if you're prepared to answer this today.
I can, we budgeted $200,000 last year to begin to sub that bill, which I'm so sure you know, has been there more than.
It's been there long before.
It's been there forever. We did have companies come out to, I'm sorry, we did have companies come out to look at.
Yes, we did, we're going out to bid again, we have $200,000 in for this year, all right, to begin doing that. We also are in the process of putting a plan together to secure the facility so that not just anyone can come in and dump and/or remove our recyclables from there or anything else or our topsoil, we're going to camera the place. So it needs, it's a lot of years in the making, Jim, I know you know that, is the, we are moving in the right direction.
The other thing.
And we will also be going out to bid to get rid of some.
The other thing is, and I don't know if anybody knows it, there should be pay bills around those piles of dirt and a soil fence. Cause we're leaching dirty water into our catch bases down there. It's contaminated, so, I mean, there's some of the things that we should do that we haven't done, so.
I believe we're getting there.
Okay, all right.
I do, we've been talking about it a lot.
I'll see you at the meeting on the 28th, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, first timer, so.
Name and address then.
Rosiana Masano, I live on Division Avenue, not far from high school, 271, I've been a resident there, I'm in my 16th year. There is a gentleman that's across the street on the corner of Melton and Division. Right now, it's going on about two years of this man, he's mentally sick. He stands outside all day and night screaming and yelling to the point that I can't get any sleep. I'm a career person, I wake up, I go to work, but this man screams outside all day long. He screams at the kids walking up from the high school, he stares at the bejesus out of them, that they have to cross the street. Every window is broken in the home, every door is broken, it's wide open, all the cats are coming in and out of there, bags of garbage piled up, the summer's coming, the stench that comes out of the home is just disgusting. And I know that you did have a program like Clean and something going on, like fixing a hole. Yeah, so I don't know how that house got missed, but there's no windows, there's no doors. And in the summer, the man's so sick, he comes outside with the garden hose and that's his shower. Like, the rest of us neighbors there.
Northeast or northwest?
It's right on, I know, I'll wait for you to finish.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you can, there's a hole in the roof now, cause I think she must have set the house on fire somehow. It's like a hoarding incident, the police won't go in, the health department won't go in because they're saying that it's so contaminated inside and fill dumps with stuff. But it's not even that part, not the eyesore and the health aspect and the cats running back and forth in and out just eating all the garbage, it's the fact that the man screams and yells and I just wanna sleep at night. Thank you, I greatly appreciate your help.
How long has this been going on?
A long time.
Yes, a long time, but the screaming and yelling.
How come it wasn't noticed before to one time and then we complained?
I don't know, well, the man, the older man next door to him, he died last year, so he couldn't complain. His screaming and yelling just started about a year ago, I think he's just lost his marbles completely and he just stands up there and screams, so.
How long could it go on after seven months?
Yeah, I travel quite often for work, so I couldn't get here, so.
Thank you, so just to give you some information, we're well aware of it, I'm well aware, but I've got numerous complaints from residents on both Division and I guess.
And Melton, yeah.
Police Department is well aware.
They come all the time.
Construction Department's well aware of it, I'm not a doctor, but there's definitely some mental unstability that's going on there. And I do know, I was told that there are multiple warrants out, because what happens is you have a house that's in disrepair. We can issue a ticket if you don't come to court, we issue a second ticket if you don't come to court, there's a warrant that's issued. Now it comes down to a decision from our police department on what they do. And we have, I've been in the manager's office with the police chief, this particular gentleman and this address has been discussed. There, I believe we have on more than one occasion arrested him, those are the warrants, you have to understand, we're dealing with something that's called bail reform now. So what we do is we send our guys out there, our police officers and women out there, and we put them in harm's way to go arrest somebody who's mentally unstable because of the condition of their house. And they're, they're in harm's way, clearly. They then arrest the person, they bring him in here and in an hour, you vote and release. And there's nothing that we can do. It's bail reform, there's absolutely nothing that we can do about it, unfortunately. We've had people, there was somebody living on Division Avenue below Washington, they're living in a tent. And we sent construction code there, construction code there, sent the police department there to deal with the warrants, comes in, literally will tell the county, you're never gonna see me again, just walk up the door. So our hands are tied. But yeah, our deputy police chief is here today representing the police department, I saw him writing down notes already, so I'm sure that we'll give it another pass and give it another look and we'll follow up our construction code department. We are aware, it's an unfortunate situation, I've seen this gentleman and our, our hands are from the construction code side, our hands are tied, and even from our law enforcement, our hands are tied.
So should I call the police at night, I mean, it's not a 911 thing, but.
If you're fearful, yes, you call, you call.
I just wanna go get some sleep, so I can do my work.
Because the more, the more calls you make, the more, the more opportunity we have to land that as a nuisance and that gives us a little more leverage to use there.
So then I'll be calling every evening.
But we are aware, your points are valid, we're aware of it, our police department has been there, construction code department has been there.
What about the health department, with all the animals that are coming in and out?
We can, just the manager can refer tomorrow, you know, I know it's the corner.
It's the corner of Division and Melton, you mean?
Melton is the. It's on the north, northwest.
There is another corner, yeah.
The other side of the street on Melton, but.
Oh, yes. You'll know that.
Yeah. We actually walked it, we walked Melton and Division, Bellmar a few weeks ago.
But the health department should do something too, the animals.
They're gonna issue, they're gonna issue violation, it's not gonna show up to court and we're gonna be in the same situation.
I appreciate your time, though, thank you.
Really wish you could go forward.
Just keep calling every night.
Just keep calling, thank you.
Keep calling. Thank you.
Chief, do you have that?
Yes.
Motion closed.
Motion closed. We have more public. Frank Tantone.
Yes, resolution 21.
Can you just speak up, Mr. Frank Tantone? Can you just speak up so we can really hear?
Resolution 21, I'm the new township manager. I know we do a regular course, can we do background checks on township manager? Have you done a lot of this township manager?
Then he's not our township manager yet, and I don't know if we do further background check on township manager.
It's on the agenda to appoint him, so I'm asking, before you appoint him, have you done background check?
I haven't done background check, no.
You haven't?
I can assure you, I don't have a record, so I don't know if you did a background check.
I'm not talking about you.
No, you didn't mention me, so I'm just responding.
I'm gonna mention you next.
I'd be disappointed if you didn't.
I think this is your, your last meeting?
No.
No.
All right.
You gonna wait for the last one or?
Mr. Frank Tantone, Mr. Frank Tantone, just address the chair, please.
The other question is, why are we giving Mr. Ducci a consulting contract? Is this new township manager not capable of running the town?
Your second question? Yeah, you know how it goes with Frank, so you're gonna say all your comments and then we'll answer if we can answer it on a back and forth basis.
So I can stay within my time of.
Sure, I would wanna eat up your time.
We went into private session with a new attorney, Del Sardo, in regard to litigation, Melvin versus Township of Delval. Who changed attorneys from Mr. George Frehno, who was doing a great job for four years? How do we change attorneys, who authorized changing the attorneys on that case?
I'm not obviously. I can respond to that, I did, because against the wishes of the mayor and council at the time, the instructions were not followed by the previous attorney. So I made the decision to change attorneys, to bring on Mr. Del Sardo.
So we can't blame the mayor and council. If the mayor got involved, then he had a conflict, if you had a, it's his case, but.
Do you wanna correct your statement, Mr. Ducci, I believe you mentioned the mayor. Let's back up. Obviously, for those council person, obviously, the mayor and the newly elected council people, all right, could not be participating in any discussions relative to this. So after consultation, all right, with the remaining council people, it was my decision to change attorneys because the previous attorney, again, did not follow the instructions of the.
Thank you, well, that makes it even more interesting, so our four old friends are the ones responsible for that. Thank you, guys.
Just address the chair.
Well, I just wanna read a few excerpts from the court case, which is, I have thick copies of all of them. Mr. Frehno did an excellent job. In the lawsuit, these are what the judge said, this is some of the comments. The plaintiff brought a frivolous lawsuit, then the plaintiff voluntarily dismissed the lawsuit, then the plaintiff tried to withdraw the dismissal of the lawsuit, then plaintiff failed to meet many deadlines for discovery. The judge also said, this litigation is a careless filing without reasonable factual or legal grounds, a basis for which this court has rightly imposed sanctions on the plaintiff. Two, the plaintiff claimed delay in opening, approving his liquor license transfer, which was barred by Township Norton. Because he couldn't transfer it, we had Norton at 750 feet, but then this council, it got like, you change it to accommodate the mayor that you can move within 500 feet. This is absolutely unbelievable that we, the taxpayers, who, by the way, we're the defendants also because it said the lawsuit is against Kevin Esposito and the Township of Delval. Township of Delval was all 36, 38,000 residents, so we're all part of this litigation. And finally, on April 4th, 2017, general, two judges, not one, two, Judge Walter, on April 4th, said he declines to consider the request for sanctions for this frivolous lawsuit. On November 20, 30th, 2018, six months ago, Judge Hayden said that plaintiff has not established fraud or misconduct and his motion to vacate his prior stipulation of voluntary dismissal is denied. So I'm asking, I hope this council and the three are in conflict. So I'm asking, I hope this council and the three are in conflict, I hope the four of you don't pull some shady things, especially you, Mr. Coggerelli, who's right there.
Mr. Frank Tantone.
I'm in the third ward, and you're my third ward captain.
Mr. Frank Tantone, please address the chair. I need you to sum up.
Well, I can refer my counsel.
No, you really can't. You have to address the chair, and you're out of time.
Okay, we're for the chair. You're my captain, and I hope this case isn't thrown out the window.
Thank you.
You even have to represent the taxpayers. We better get the cost, all the attorney costs that has cost us for the last three or four years. And if not, we're gonna hold you four responsible.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask the same question again, and I'm gonna keep asking it. When are we gonna start putting everything online so I can read it instead of coming here? I've been asking that for, what, the last six months? Maybe we can find, do, I mean, you have two IT people up there. I mean, it's very simple for you to do it. All it takes is four votes up there to say, "Let's do it." It's not that difficult.
Thank you.
I'm not done yet.
You, Mario Corrigan, you sat up here at one point, right?
Yeah. But we didn't have the technology to handle it.
Back then, you did.
We did have, we had newspapers back then. People knew what was going on. Now, now you just hang on social media. And you can, at that, you can direct any way you want, tell people, if they don't have it, they have to believe it. But if you have the newspaper, you think you're getting away with a lot or something?
I think we made a lot of progress communication-wise. We now have a great website. We now have live stream of our council meetings. How about, like, acknowledging some of that rather than just finding more things that could...
No, I'm not criticizing you. I think you're doing good things. When I gave you the excellent award from the Chamber of Commerce, I meant all those things I said about you. But there are a few things I don't agree with you.
No problem.
So, but overall, I do commend you on the things you're doing because you are putting the community together.
Thank you.
So I'm not gonna criticize you for that.
And I will give you the better answer. The money's in the budget for this year to actually do what you're asking to do.
Okay, so now, the other thing I had, well, Mr. Frank Tantone mentioned on Resolution number 21. I noticed this morning there was an on there, and I noticed this on now. So after I sit down, maybe you can give us the terms, the conditions, the facts, the benefits on that, if you're going to vote on it. And one of the questions you asked me, I'm using it for five minutes, is, as you know, I'm opposed to the pilot programs because I don't think it's fair to taxpayers. And you mentioned before about 4,500 senior households. If they, they don't have social media, which you probably acknowledge, but if they knew how much break these developers were getting on these tax programs, I think they'd be open arms, and they wouldn't be too happy. Now, also, we talked about Jersey City a while back. Well, I go to Jersey City a lot. In Jersey City, they give out, what, you said, billion dollars, maybe it's more, I don't know, in tax breaks. But also, their schools have lost $120 million in state aid. Besides losing $120 million in state aid, one of my clients, when they did the revow, the revow doubled his taxes from $12,000 to $24,000. All these abatements are supposed to be helping the taxpayers, and here they are forcing them out. The guy says, "I gotta move to Pennsylvania." I mean, all this money coming in from these so-called pilot programs, then we're talking about funding for the schools. That's funding is fine, that's great, but what if it don't last forever? Or these pilot programs don't kick in and help fund this? I don't think so. You talk about millennials, and that's, what about senior housing? What about other generations that are here, too? Why are we only focusing on millennials? Are they the only people in the world? I paid for their education, they haven't paid for somebody else's, too. And the problem is, we don't have a newspaper which gives accountability to say, "Hey, look, he said this, I said this," and let the people decide on that. I asked you a few questions last time, a month ago, two months ago. Will the rent, will the pilot programs be under rent control? And I'm opposed to that again because we have five years of payment. Give them a five-year payment. Large corporation, Amazon, paid no federal taxes on the $11.2 billion. And it boils down to, is constantly the taxpayer, the taxpayer has to pay for it. And there were a number of pharmaceutical companies, they don't pay any taxes. But why do I have to keep paying for it? Where's my tax break? I improved my house. I improved my house, and then my assessment goes up. So where's my break? Is it fair? Is it fair to me? And just the other thing I was gonna say, if these pilot programs are so great, why give it 30, 50?
Excuse me, somebody's speaking.
Tell him to shut up there.
Somebody's speaking. You're speaking awesome. Everybody's speaking. We're gonna pay attention to our one person.
Tell him, tell him.
I'm not telling you.
Good.
So if they're so great, why don't we just put it on a ballot and ask the people, give them the facts? I would like to see how much each, I'm gonna do it over, it's on, I'm gonna find out how much they're paying in tax. One of, one of the pilots who gave out, supposed to pay $270 a year in taxes, they're paying $135. Where's the break? So we could put it on a ballot, or maybe I could put it on the ballot, so we'll have to decide what to do here.
Thank you.
Philip Frantiantoni, I see that you have on the agenda to hire a new town manager. I wanna know what the package deal is gonna get, what this salary is gonna be, and I wanna know what Mr. Ducci's salary is gonna be as a consultant with those two things. And also, when you mentioned about sending out a newsletter and that the seniors asked for it, I was at that Friday meeting. You asked the seniors, they did not ask you about sending out a newsletter. First of all, we have Channel 34 in Bellville from the high school. Most seniors have the internet, not the internet, have cable TV. Why can't you broadcast on that channel? Let them watch the town meetings, what goes on, on that channel? I mean, we have it there. Comcast gave it to, helped them out to get however they got it. Instead of live streaming, it's all for the younger people because a lot of the older people and even younger people do not have where they can livestream. So I suggest that, so close with Mr. Tomco, talk to him and try to get the meetings on their cable television because it's part of Bellville.
Thank you. Mary Higgins, 148 Brighton Avenue. Regarding Resolution 21, appointing Anthony Di Iacano as town manager, I believe previously you had stated there was going to be a committee to interview the best candidates that committee ever convened to interview the best candidates for town manager because you mentioned that previously several times. Was there a committee?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Were you on that committee, Mayor Mellon?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'd be interested to know, who was on the committee?
So why don't, let me field all your questions, and then, well, I don't wanna eat up your time, so I'll answer.
Okay, okay, thank you, but I think the public has a right to know who was on the committee to screen the best candidate for town manager because if you Google his name and if you look at newspaper articles, it shows that he had been terminated and fired from a previous municipal position that I believe he had as town manager. And for him to be the best possible candidate for Bellville is just mind-boggling. I'd like to know the justification of the people on the committee to even, even bring this up, let alone have a resolution. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Motion closed?
Motion closed, public.
Motion made, second, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosverelli, DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Stu Loberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes. Resolution?
Make a motion to move the consent agenda?
Motion made, and? Motion made, second, to move the consent agenda? Seven issues.
21.
21.
21 for me, too.
Okay. First, call the roll for the consent agenda.
Hold on, I wanna plug.
25.
25?
Yeah. I think that's, that's the one with the settlement, is that the...
Yes. 25. 21 and 25.
21 and 25.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna move, what, just the consent, but not including 21 and 25?
Exactly.
Okay. Make a motion made, second, first, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosverelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Stu Loberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes. Resolution 21.
We'll call it?
Just a roll call.
Sure.
Someone move it second?
You gotta make it, we need it.
My second.
Make the motion.
We gotta move it second.
Make the motion to have a roll call.
Yeah, we got it. Second, first, call the roll for Resolution 21.
Councilmember Cosverelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
No.
Robel?
Yes.
Stu Loberg?
I'd like to say something first. At no time did we ever discuss this contract with the council. Who negotiated it? Who put it on the agenda?